Welcome, everybody. I am calling to order this Board of Education meeting. It is Monday, December 18th, 2023. It is 6:03 PM. We are in the Nashville North Boardroom. Ms. Lampier, can you do the roll call, please?
Um, sure.
Thank you. So...
I have it on, yes.
So Ms. Darling is not here. Ms. Raymond?
Here.
Mr. Claffey?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Oden?
Here.
I'm here. Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Ms. Bishop?
Here.
And Ms. Giglio?
Here.
Okay. Excellent.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen. We're just gonna step over here. We have recognition tonight, so hold on one second. I'm gonna give you the floor in one sec.
Okay. Good evening. It is my pleasure to recognize the three departing board members and the departure of our student representative from Nashville High School South with a special send-off. We are grateful for your service to the city of Nashua. Collectively, your tenure has been far-reaching, impacting school district leadership and the way we teach and the way we work. Altogether, you have served our school district and our students for more than 30 years, spanning multiple decades. We are grateful for your belief in public education. Collectively, we recognize the unique role public education plays in teaching students how to fulfill their potential and in advancing the vitality of civic life. I know you brought a high regard for public education with you to your tenure on the board and will carry on that belief as you move forward in the years ahead. Each of you has brought a viewpoint seasoned through personal and governing board experience, and it gives me great honor to recognize you individually. Jessica Brown? Jessica, thank you for your insight as a very invested member of our school community, including as a parent of two students in our schools. As a member of the JSSBC, I know you are very much looking forward to the fall to see the culmination of the middle school project, which you have been a part of during your tenure on the board. Paula Johnson? I may have a plaque for you. Paula, thank you for investing much time and effort in our schools and bringing a great deal of experience to the board as someone who has been involved in the well-being of the city of Nashua for quite some time. Student success is always at the heart of our conversations. We very much appreciate your attention to the business of education and how we financially support teaching and learning. And Dottie Oden? Dottie, you depart as our most senior member of the Nashville Board of Education. Thank you for your support and for taking the time to visit so many of our schools to see firsthand our students in our classrooms or during special school events and performances. We hope you know the lasting impact you have made on the school district. And Dante Castellano? Dante, your time representing South has been eventful. Your thorough preparation for each board meeting will be missed. Your senior year is already a memorable one. You set the pace this fall for state championship and cross-country, capping your previous two years as a member of the two-time state champion soccer team. Now you are on your way to run cross-country and study at UMass Lowell. Congratulations. Have a great final semester at South, and we look forward to seeing you cross that stage at graduation in June. Until then, good luck with your studies. And, you know, again, our thanks to each of you. Thank you.
What we were saying that you can't hear is Warren is not leaving us, so we're not celebrating the end of his tenure because he gets us for another year. So congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm gonna miss you. This brings us back to the boring parts of the agenda. Looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Oden, thank you, Ms. Raymond. Any comments or questions? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, that is gonna be so lonely next month. Okay. The cheese stands alone, and it's good. What happens when you stand for what you believe in? Sometimes you throw odd sheep out. Yes. Any item? No. Communications? So this brings us up to our first public comment question period. Ms. Dar- oh, Heather's already up. Okay, first public comment is for items on the agenda. We don't have a moving microphone, so they are going- whoever's coming up to speak is going to have to sit next to Ms. Darling. Okay, remind everybody, there's three minutes on the clock. If we go over 15 minutes, I'll need a motion. But first up is Stephen Skare. Starting the timer now. I apologize. I had my phone away like... Three minutes from last time. Okay, starting. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stephen Skare. Good evening, 111 East Hobart Street. I just wanted to share some concerns I have about the thought, the plans to get rid of leveling at the middle school. I'm a special education teacher with a lot of experience. I've worked as a special educator all the way from grade two to non-verbal autistic adults in their twenties. And one of the frustrations that's tough is giving kids the appropriate accommodations they need to access a regular education. And if the regular education is so high that it's out of the kid's ability, then we need more special education to access that curriculum. The problems that I have with getting rid of leveling, and I've been through it before, is there's limits to how much that you can accommodate. And when kids get in over their heads, they get really frustrated. That's where you see behavioral concerns that affect everyone. And there's more pressure on the teacher to find ways to pass students just because it seems like the decent thing to do, and we all love the kids. And these situations also end up causing more special ed referrals because the kids need the help to pass these classes. As far as delivering special education services, and I've delivered hundreds and hundreds of services, if I'm teaching reading, math, and writing, I'm hoping I can do it on a basic level. Because right now, I'm working with some high school kids that don't have elementary school. What happens when kids get over their heads in classes is people say, "Well, Stephen, you know, Joey's really behind in English. Can you help him with Romeo and Juliet? We really don't want to fail this class." "Well, I don't either." But when the regular ed curriculum gets too tough, that's what happens, and special ed services end up being pushed aside. So if anything, I would go- my dream for special education would be to go the other way. If you've got a young man or a young woman who doesn't have third or fourth grade skills, and this is really common even in high school, that instead of putting them in an Algebra II class, you've learned how to add, subtract, with regrouping, and they learned unlike fractions. Instead, what we're doing is we're pushing kids through in order to get them through grade-level classes, and it's a disservice to everyone. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Beth Skare?
It's Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. Yeah, I'm in agreement with Stephen that you should keep leveling in the middle schools. There's such a wide range of abilities amongst the students, and it makes them all suffer if they, you know, if they all are learning the same material. The smart kids are, you know, bored. The kids with- the kids at a lower level are in over their heads. It just makes it difficult for all the students. And the teachers- think of the poor teachers. I know you- there's been a lot of concern with keeping teachers, hiring teachers, and this makes it tougher on teachers, a lot tougher. And this also drives more students out of Nashville schools into education freedom accounts, private schools, homeschooling. You know, there's so many things driving parents out of schools that this is just one more thing. So please keep leveling. Thanks.
Thank you. Gary Hoffman?
Gary Hoffman, 38, Perham Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. And I'm also speaking about the policy to change ability grouping. I've been speaking about this topic since about 2016. A lot of people don't understand why I'm so passionate about this, the importance of keeping some ability grouping at the middle school level. And as some of you know, I was- part of the reason I became a middle school teacher is I was in a middle school that transitioned from a junior high school to a middle school. And they did away with ability grouping, and we actually had ability grouping when I was in elementary school. And it was, you know, I was in the top ability group in elementary school, and when they switched to heterogeneous grouping, it was a really tough transition for me. You know, our school didn't do some of the things they needed to do, surrounding bullying and stuff. And middle school was hard, and I, you know, it was not an easy time for me. I actually stopped asking so many questions in class. I was labeled a smart kid. I wasn't very comfortable. I think this transition is going to be a lot tougher than people think, and so that's why I say if you are gonna do this, you know, go it slow, see how it goes in sixth grade first. We haven't had much opportunity to do any professional development around this. We have a tremendous number of changes already proposed for next year. We have a sixth period day that's gonna increase our class sizes, mind you. That's the only way it can happen, where a lot of the teachers are gonna be moving into new buildings. And I think that it's much more prudent to, if you do choose to do this, to try it in sixth grade first. Don't do it all at once, you know? Shock therapy isn't rarely- rarely works. So please either amend this policy to start it in sixth grade first, see how it goes, go it slow, or just float it down. I just, I think, I don't think the policy as written with all the other changes going on next year is very wise to approve. Thank you.
Carrie Burns?
Carrie Burns, 5 Cardinal Circle, Nashua. Member of the Middle School Steering Committee, which we started working, our new work with it, I guess, last year. And when we started our new work in the Middle School Steering Committee, we dove right into hard conversations. We talked about our vision of middle school and our beliefs and our best practices. We read research. We had really good discussions. We reviewed and reflected our current policies and practices. And one of the things that we all agreed on in this committee was that we value, what we value is that all children want to be successful and all children can learn. And this, of course, led us to a lot more hard conversations about schedules and core content offerings and unified arts and foreign languages, curriculum grading, and leveling. And that's where our work started. That's where our- some more hard conversations began. And we held the practice of leveling up against what we said that we value, and we found that they did not match up. They don't fit. And that mismatch often leads to strong feelings, maybe of uncertainty, maybe a little vaults, some fear, everything that goes along with the inevitability of change. But rather than sitting in frustration, we participated in productive discourse. We considered the benefits and drawbacks of leveling, and we listened and empathized with each other. Some teachers are already comfortable teaching without levels, and some are not so sure. But in these conversations, there were teachers comfortable enough to say, "I've always taught with levels, and I don't know if I know how to do it any other way." We cannot deny that our data and the research support a need for change in our middle schools. The Middle School Steering Committee voted unanimously to remove leveling in our middle schools. The recommendation was not for a slow start. It was a unanimous recommendation to remove leveling from our middle schools. That was the recommendation of a group of educators committed to making decisions to move our students forward. Since this recommendation was brought to the board, you have heard from many educators and parents, community members, debating whether or not leveling is right or wrong, good or bad. But this decision tonight is not really about being right and being wrong and all of the emotions that go along with change. Decisions in education need to be based on the current research and data, and we need to continually focus on learning more so that we are always working to get it right. So maybe what we need to do is listen to the teachers, who are brave enough to say, "We need to change, but I'm not sure how to do it," because there's power in that vulnerability. And if we listen to it and plan for it, that's how we're gonna get it right.
Thank you. Can I give that back to you? And this brings us up to our superintendent's comments. So I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andred.
Thank you. Good evening. We're very proud to know, sorry, I want to give congratulations to Santiago Somarostro. We are very proud to know Santiago was named All-American in soccer. He's a- in talking among ourselves, we've had many good candidates, but we believe he is the first All-American from the Nashua schools. So Santiago is a member of the Nashville South Class of 2024. He's a senior forward and first-team All-State soccer player and a member of the South two-time state championship soccer team. This is a very prestigious honor that recognizes outstanding achievement on and off the field. We're delighted to know that his soccer career will continue at nearby UMass Lowell. So congratulations, Santiago. We wish you continued success in both in the classroom and on the soccer field. So congratulations, Santiago, to being our first All-American. I would also like to take this time to acknowledge the generous holiday spirit within our schools. Holiday and winter concerts have been taking place in each of our schools in the recent weeks. Just last week, I had the chance to see the students at Amherst Street Elementary School and North High School. Ledge Street is taking place this week. Then I'll have the opportunity. Also, keep in mind that the annual Santa Fund Concert will take place tomorrow, Tuesday, at 6:00 PM at Nashua High School South, and all the proceeds will benefit the United Way of Greater Nashua. And speaking of the United Way, as you know, for many years, the city of Nashua employees have joined together to support an annual fundraising campaign for the United Way of Greater Nashua. This year, I'm proud to report that our schools and school district employees contributed more than $5,000 to this campaign. I want to be sure to thank our employees for their timely and considerable support because many of our United Way programs support our families and our students. Also, I know members of the school committees have recently come forward and donated to our food service department to cover lunch program balances at two of our elementary schools, totaling several hundred of dollars. In addition, Meals Matter, a student organization that is dedicated to addressing food insecurity, is also working this week with our school principals and food service department to eliminate the lunch program balances for our students, students' families most in need. I admire their work, led by Leslie Anton, who's at Nashua North, and the following members of Meals Matter, Catherine Azovito, Lindley Davis, Kaylee DeLeo, Ashley Franco, Rachel Garcia, Claire Hildenbrand, Ryan Mamos, Maggie Nelson, Ben Raymond, Griffin Riley, Riley Russell, Anna Santarosa, Julia Sossier, Colin Schrebnar, Bela Chavaris, Shania Veldemar, and Madeline Zellers. It's heartening to hear the generosity of our community. Thank you for all who are thinking of our students and their families during this holiday season. I would also like to take this opportunity to wish everyone all the best this holiday season. Enjoy and keep healthy and safe. School reopens in the new year on Tuesday, January 2nd. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you. Board responds to superintendent comments. I'll start over here with Ms. Giglio. Sorry. Before I start with, I'm gonna shock.
It doesn't matter. Those are all wonderful things, and I'm happy to hear all of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I went to a few of them. I will say, when I went home, I looked at the elementary calendar and I clicked on each school, but the only thing on the calendar was biddy basketball. And I think these things ought to be on the calendar so that people know. I did go to the Amherst Street one because having taught there, I know people, and they were saying they were gonna have their concert, and I wanted to go. And I would have gone to Moore had I known about them. But biddy basketball, our kids in our school play in biddy basketball, but it's not a school-sponsored thing. So I'm hoping we can change that and make the school calendar include school events also. Thank you.
No comments? I'm just thrilled that we're ending both the season and my term with all these exciting new things and wonderful news. Thank you.
Lampier?
Yeah, everything, everything sounds great, and I just want to wish everyone happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and I hope everybody enjoys the time off.
Ms. Claffey? Ms. Raymond? Ms. Darling?
Happy holidays, everybody.
Thank you. Now over to the student member comments. You're making the most intense eye contact with me, so I'm gonna guess Dante goes first, did I? You guys have easy tells.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're all doing well and enjoying the holiday season thus far. I can't believe this is the last time I'll be giving a board update, but I've truly enjoyed my time working with you all, and it's been an honor to represent the students of South. I'm more than confident that my predecessor, Tenasi, will do a great job in the coming year. I don't have much for updates tonight besides that this week is Spirit Week, and I encourage you all to participate. Tomorrow's Dress Like a Present. Wednesday is Dress to Represent, Heat or Cold. Thursday, Dress as Your Favorite Grinch Character. And Friday, freshmen wear gray, sophomores wear white, juniors wear black, and seniors wear purple. And I'd also like to congratulate Santi Somarostro, a friend of mine, for his All-American Award. It's definitely a huge accomplishment. As for leveling, I do support leveling in middle schools. I feel like it's necessary for students of similar abilities to be in the same classes. I believe this is how students learn best, is they're able to go at like the right pace for them. Lastly, be sure to keep checking your Google Classrooms to stay up to date with happenings in the school, and I wish the best of luck to Tenasi and the rest of the board in the coming year. Happy holidays.
Warren?
Good evening, everyone. As Dante said, it is truly hard to believe that we are already at the last board meeting of this calendar year. I am extremely grateful for the opportunity I have been given this last year, but I'm even more grateful for the Titans re-electing me for yet another term. With now, without, excuse me, with now having a year's experience under my belt, I hope to achieve some pretty ambitious goals in this up-and-coming year. I want to say how much, how much of an honor it's been to serve with you all, especially Dante. And Dante, I look forward to reading about you in future articles and how you once again came in first place in a cross-country race. And to Tenasi and future board members, I look forward to yet another year of service and dedication in ensuring a fantastic public education. Speaking of the actual education we are providing, I still stand by the notion that de-leveling the middle schools would do a disservice to all students. When making your decision tonight, I encourage you to keep in mind the comments that the public, along with Dante and I, have made, and choose not to go forward with the de-leveling plan. Thank you.
I meant successor, not predecessor, also, Tenasi.
Thank you, guys. Yeah, we're gonna, we'll miss Dante's updates, but maybe you can write in, and then Warren can read them for you, because there's, there's no time limit. You just keep talking. Yes, yes. All right, guys, thank you. This brings us up to Committee on Finance and Operations, so I will give the floor over to Ms. Johnson.
Thank you very much. Our meeting was December 13th, 2023, in this boardroom. I move to approve the purchase of the new LED lighting for the video production studio from the Events United for a cost of $117,837.11 to be charged to the CTE-SRF number 2258.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the purchase of the new LED lighting for the video production studios, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the FY '25 Deferred Maintenance and Capital Improvement documents as presented.
Second.
Thank you, guys. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the FY '25 Deferred Maintenance and Capital Improvement documents as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move to approve the FY '24 October-November Budget Transfer Report.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the fiscal year '24 October-November Budget Transfer Report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And this brings us up to Committee on Policy. I will give the floor over to Ms. Raymond.
That was very fast. Thank you. So this is our first time that we have a first and a second reading listed on our agenda, based on our policy that we approved earlier this fall. So the second reading tonight- So the second reading tonight, we have listed first because the second meeting is the time that we have our discussion and we take our vote. A first reading is to let the community know that we are considering these policies, and of course, if there are any questions or comments, it's an opportunity that if there is an issue, for us to bring it back to policy and work on it again before it comes to a vote with the board. So we're at the second reading, second reading of policy IMBD, Middle School Education. And so I move that we approve policy IMBD with the changes that were recommended from Policy Committee.
Second.
Thank you. And I would like to speak to it, if I might. So I appreciate all of the parents, educators, and committee members who have come to the last two meetings to give public comments, and those who have emailed their thoughts to the board. Many people have expressed fear that making a change to how things were done will have a negative effect on our students, and I think that, I think that's natural, to always fear change. However, having been part of the Policy Committee meetings and talked to the, talking to the Steering Committee meeting, the Steering Committee, and also reviewing the Department of Justice, I wanna bring to everyone's attention the fact that there's significant evidence that diverse districts who use leveling develop systematic problems with underrepresentation of minority students in the top-level classes. This happens everywhere. Here in New Hampshire, Manchester was recently cited by the Office of Civil Rights and required to de-level their middle schools after a lawsuit showed that of 600 Hispanic students in Manchester, only nine were in honors classes. There are numerous news articles about Nashua's own struggle with the question of leveling going back to 2008, and how our current practice disproportionately groups minority and low-level income students into the lowest classes. Nashua is currently under a settlement agreement with the Department of Justice regarding equal access to instruction for all students. Our numbers are not as stark as Manchester, but less than 15% of our honors classes are minority or low-income students, even though those students make up 45% of our population. The Department of Justice has not required the district to de-level, while they have made a number of requests for changes to how we deliver our education. But I don't think we should wait for a court order to make a change that benefits the majority of our students. When de-leveling came to the board last in 2018, I voted to keep the honors classes because at that time, I believed that honors classes offered advanced instructions to our middle school students, and our extensions classes offered grade-level instruction, and that was meeting most students' needs. But at that time, the board wanted more information, and we asked the middle school steering committee to do research on this. The steering committee has completed its analysis, and frankly, the findings are upsetting. We have even smaller percentages of minority and low-income students being classified as honors today than we did in 2018, and those numbers were smaller than they were in 2008 when the question first came up. Something is happening to disenfranchise these students, and I no longer believe that doing things the same way will yield different outcomes. The steering committee also found that across all three middle schools, only the honors-level classes are being taught to grade-level standards. The other levels use the same curriculum but move at a slower pace. This means that the vast majority of our middle schoolers do not complete the entire curriculum each year. The result is they fall further behind, and because the honors students are receiving only grade-level instruction, not advanced instruction, they are not receiving adequately challenging work, nor are they being prepared for the honors and AP classes in high school, which frankly, is not fair. Nashua offers the most AP classes out of all of the districts in the state. We tie with Wyndham, no other district comes close, and we need to be preparing our students for those classes. The steering committee researched what best practices are for middle-level education and what other schools are doing. Most other districts in southern New Hampshire and the entirety of Massachusetts have been de-leveled, in many cases for almost 20 years. None of the private schools or charter schools in Nashua or surrounding towns use middle, use leveling in middle levels. Nashua appears to be in need of a course correction. I believe that we need to join our neighbors in offering grade-level instruction to all students in middle schools and differentiated instruction to those who need extra help or extra challenges. So I support the change of de-leveling. I also support the change of codifying the practice of offering high school-level classes in the eighth grade, because I think that those students who do need the extra challenge are ready for things like algebra and languages, and we need to be meeting those kids where they're at. Because right now, I don't know that we're meeting even half of our kids, much less most of our kids. So I urge my members to follow the recommendations of the steering committee and approve the changes that have been promoted, presented.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Darling?
So I wanna start with saying that I knew nothing really about leveling two months ago, three months ago, and it has been amazing to learn about, and what, what really struck me is there's this thing called the Pygmalion Effect, which researchers discovered in 1968, and it basically, these researchers conducted an experiment at this primary school and have the students sit for an intelligence test, and then they tell the teachers, these 20, you know, these are the kids that are the top 20%, they're gonna have exceptionally high grades by the end of the year. Teachers had no idea that these names were picked at random, it had nothing to actually do with their intelligence tests, but what they found was because those teachers had the belief that that student was gifted, that student had higher expectations and therefore met those higher expectations. I know my high school had leveling in the sense that we had the college prep, the honors, and the stoner classes. I don't know what the technical term was for the stoner classes, to be perfectly honest, but I do know that the day my social studies teacher told me that I was gonna write a five-paragraph essay on the Civil War and that each paragraph was only to be three to five sentences long, I was not in the right class. That should never be considered an essay, please. Not at high school. So the more I've researched, though, the more I've seen that schools have been getting rid of leveling for decades and have all seen these positive results from it, and I do think that Nashua sometimes gets a little stuck in the past. We very much are stubborn. But yeah, 1968, that's when this was discovered. It's 2023, and I think, I think we finally have the right administration and the right teachers that have the faith in our students that wanna set those higher expectations and see what our kids can do.
It wouldn't be me if I didn't voice my opinion.
Let's hear it for the first time, Ms. Johnson.
There you go. There you go. I have to go back and comment when we say current research and data say. I remember back when my two boys were in school with the current research and data said whole language was the best, and we had a whole generation of kids that couldn't read because whole language was not the best. It was a horrible thing. Data's great, research is great, but we implement things and we don't look forward. I was never a big advocate of leveling, but I don't feel just pulling the whole thing out when we're redistricting and this district is going through a lot come September. We're gonna be moving our students around, and we're gonna be putting in new programs, and it's very interesting to listen to our board members, our high school board members talking about the same thing, about whether or not we should have leveling. And they would have more of the inside scoop because they're closer in the peer group than we are. I listened to Mr. Hoffman. We don't agree a lot, but when we agree, we agree on all this. Do we just rush in and do this, or do we do a slow implementation of this? I don't think that we should be rushing in and just pulling the rug out because, you know, when I hear about the minorities, there's no reason why we can't make sure all of our students excel, whether we're in leveling or we're not in leveling, whether we're in ability grouping or not. I have concerns with the ability grouping. How are the teachers gonna be able to work in all these groups? We're gonna be bringing in more Paris? We can't get enough as we need as it is. Paris are not teachers. We are paying our teachers to teach. They went to school, they got the certificates, they've got the certifications, they've got all these degrees. That's who we need to be teaching our students. I have a concern with the ability grouping. I don't know if we can do all this in a classroom. We have asked our teachers to be more than just teachers. We have asked them to be parents, we have asked them to be psychologists, we have asked them to be social workers, we have asked them to teach SEL. What are they supposed to be teaching? Reading, writing, and arithmetic. We have, we should have music and we should have art. That's what we should be teaching our kids. Everything else, to me, in my opinion, is over and above. And if our kids can't master the three things here, we, it doesn't matter if we have ability grouping or leveling. We need to make sure by the time they get into high school, they've mastered what they were supposed to in the elementary school and in the middle school, and a lot of them don't master this for whatever reason. And it's, you know, I know, it doesn't matter what you have them in, why are we letting the minority kids not advance? Are we not teaching them? And we know there has been lack of consistency in the system. So until you bring on this consistency with your elementary schools on what they're all learning, then until your middle schools, we're always gonna have that gap. And I truly believe that sitting on this board for four years, listening to this whole thing, and then watching what happened during COVID and the remote from home, that's where we lost a lot more of our students. And even I talked about this back in 2000, the same thing, nothing has changed. And I don't believe anything is really gonna change until you really take a good look at where we are going wrong and why aren't more kids excelling? Because you know what? It's that positive reinforcement attitude. I used to say to my kids all the time, Ms. Coffey knows me very well, I used to say to my kids, you can do anything you want in life as long as you put your mind to it, and that's what it's all about, giving the kids an encouragement and the positive recognition. So unless, you could do any of all this you want, but unless you put that focus there and you make sure that when they're going from grade to grade, they have mastered it, you could have ability grouping or leveling, it's not gonna make a change. I'm not gonna support the ability grouping, taking away the leveling at this point in time. I think you're gonna have too much going on in September, and I don't want these kids to have any more problems because it's gonna be a big thing with this redistricting, if people think it's not gonna be. When you're moving students into a brand-new school and some of these kids are coming from Exit Six, going over the highway, all the way almost into Hollis, that's gonna be a long ride for them on the bus, and to start pulling all this out and to have a whole new program, I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anyone else? Ms. Brown?
So I mentioned some of this in the previous meetings, but I'm gonna kind of think about something different. I agree with Ms. Raymond that we are not and have not been meeting the needs of our Nashua students for years on this board of education. We've actually dropped in our test scores for reading and math every year for over a decade, and some of us were in this room at that time. If you would've asked me pre-COVID, if I supported heterogeneous groupings, I would've said yes in a lot of situations. I think that there's a lot of benefit to having good student modeling and raising, raising the bar. Post-COVID, the gap is very, very wide. We only have about, last year, we had about 30% of our eighth graders reading at grade level. So that space in between what you've got, if you've got a second-grade reading level in the same classroom as a 10th-grade reading level, that puts a huge burden on teachers to try to bridge that gap in between. I recognize that there is, we need more supports in place to bring those, the students who are struggling up, and I think the students that are already excelling will probably find ways to continue to excel. But actually, I get a little nervous with the kids that are like right on the edge of going up or down, and they're kinda gonna get lost in the middle. We had a teacher come in and speak last week about maybe only having one, and I don't even know if you've ever seen it, call it honors class, I actually recommended turning it to an accelerated class, recognition that all of the classes should in fact be working at grade level, with the same expectations, with one accelerated class so that, at each grade level, so that the kids who really need that and the teachers who don't, aren't expected to also come up with another curriculum with everyone else. I also wanna say that I think that we're trying to put, because we're now post-COVID, that gap between students is even larger, and I think that the evidence absolutely tells that low-income students, students of color, and students that, non-English-speaking students, all were disproportionately affected negatively by COVID. This board chose to keep the Nashua schools closed longer than any other school in the entire state of New Hampshire. So some of that's on us, and we bridged, we made that gap. So now, to put that burden on teachers with that wide of an education gap, I do think that this, I think that the Curriculum Committee, I think Dr. Sarfati, I think Dr. Andre, I think they're doing amazing things in this district, and I think in two to five years, I think that gap's gonna shrink, but right now, it's a huge burden on teachers to expect them to have to teach to such a wide margin of students, and I think you're gonna be doing both, I think you're gonna do students at all levels an injustice. So I can't support this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oden?
I guess I'm gonna speak from my experience at the elementary school. There was no leveling. We were responsible for all the students and for all the students to make progress. Sometimes what happens is the students that find things easier, that are more advanced, have a positive effect on those other students. They see where you're going to go, what you need to be doing, and even in first and second grade, I saw that as a plus. I have an enormous respect for the people that were on that committee. They did a lot of work, a lot of research. They're middle school teachers, they want what's best, they know those students. I'm gonna support this. When I looked at all the other towns around us, there's nobody but us that are homogeneous grouping our students. We don't, at the middle, at the elementary school, fifth-grade teachers have all of them, and then they go to sixth grade and they're all separated. I just think, I just think we, we need to have the same expectations. It's going to be more work for the teachers. I'll tell you, there were years I had to do five different lesson plans for reading, math, and at least, they're teaching the same subject. They're gonna have to differentiate their lesson plans, but they're only teaching one subject. Fifth-grade teachers have to do it for all the subjects for all the kids. That's part of teaching, knowing your students and differentiating for instruction. So I, I, I will support this, and I think it's a step for Nashua, moving forward for all students. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just have to comment on Ms. Oden's comments. Elementary school is when they're first starting to learn to read and do math. If they have already fallen behind coming out of elementary and you're putting them into a class at the middle school and they can't, and their groupings aren't correct, what happens then? Do they fall further behind than being in like in a level group where they're at that point? There's nothing that says that they can never move out of foundation, mention or go up to AP. My concern, and I agree with Ms. Brown, this whole thing with COVID brought us further and further behind. This might've been, in my opinion, might've worked better three, four years ago before this with COVID, before more of our students fell behind, but we were really closed down for a long time, and we saw what happened when our students came back into school. We remember the parents sitting here begging to bring our kids back into school, and we didn't do it. So my biggest fear is that- So my biggest fear is that I'd hate to see any more students fall further behind because they don't always come out. They can come out of elementary school already behind in reading and go into the middle school. I've seen them go into junior high, four years behind in reading. And how do you catch them up when you're grouping? That's my concern. How are you going to catch them up if they're all in the group, even the abilities in that classroom? It's, to me, I'm not, I only have grandkids now, but I remember going through this with my kids. Being in school all the time, trying to get my kid caught up in reading four years behind. And that's when you start talking about kids, that's when the problems start and the behavior begins. Because they're so far behind, they feel they can't get up, be caught up to anybody else. And the worst thing in the world is when they can't read because reading is the basis of everything. Thank you.
Ms. Oden, Ms. Darling, Dante, and then Mr. Claffey. Sorry, I want my hands raised.
It's his last one. I'll yield the gentleman my time.
Okay. We got two people in front of you guys first. Ms. Oden first.
Thank you. I just want to say, if you read all the research, all across the country, kids are behind because of COVID. It wasn't just Nashua, although looking at what happened, I think I'd be a little bit more cautious about how long the schools were closed. I'm not sure that made a tremendous amount of difference. But the whole country is still seeing the ramifications of COVID, not just Nashua.
Darling? Mike?
Just to respond to Ms. Johnson's, how do you catch them up when they're in the large group altogether? You don't. You keep them back. The kids that haven't met the minimum standards of their grades should be repeating in order to gain the knowledge that they need instead of just being pushed forward. Because I know the biggest flaw that I saw firsthand in COVID, when it came to like the delivering of the education, was the minute my kid realized that he could mess off and no one was really going to ever say anything because the teachers were trying to manage full classrooms, he stopped doing the work. He had zero expectation placed on him. And it goes back to the Pygmalion Effect. If we have the expectation, you need to get to this point in order to exceed to the next grade, the next school, whatever, we're doing a disservice by not following through on that. But I don't think leveling versus not leveling is going to fix the kids who are so far behind. I honestly think the only thing that can help them is more time. That's it.
Dante and then Mr. Claffey.
Yeah, so I definitely agree with Ms. Johnson and Ms. Brown. Just, I feel like the gap is already so large, not just because of COVID, just in general, I feel like it's already so large within leveled classes. So I couldn't imagine there being an even larger gap. I feel like that'd be unfair to teachers and students. And then, at the same time, most high school classes are also grouped by level, at least at the moment. So I feel like that's a good preparation for them. And in general, I feel this idea definitely is growing. And like has been mentioned, it's a lot, it's very popular everywhere around us. But I just feel like it's too much of a drastic change. Kind of like as Mr. Hoffman mentioned, like it needs to be more of a gradual implementation if we do end up doing this. Thank you.
Mr. Claffey?
Thank you. I'd like to offer an amendment.
You can make that motion if you want.
I'd like to move that we amend the policy IMBD change.
What would you like to amend it to?
It's a simple, Ms. Lamp, are you ready? Is this the clerk? This is, I try to make it easy as possible. So in the second paragraph of the policy itself, where we've deleted and read leveling of students, I would ask that that be restored or, what's the problem? Re- restored? reinstated? And all I would do is add the words "in grades seven and eight." So basically, what I'm saying is, sixth grade would be unleveled, seventh and eighth would continue to be leveled. That's what I'm proposing.
I'll second that.
And as far as keeping the words homogeneous grouping and I'm not, that can remain deleted or, I mean, I think it's pretty, if you say leveling, I don't understand why that definition was in there. But whether it's, whether the words homogeneous grouping are there or not, I don't, doesn't bother me. And whether we retain IMDB or not has no effect on what I'm hoping to discuss. So can I speak to that?
Did I have a, did you second that amendment? Ms. Darling? So we're speaking on the amendment now?
I just have one question about the amendment. Well, I know Mr. Hoffman had said that, like rolling it all out for the sixth grade and holding off on seventh and eighth grade, that that would make it easier. I don't understand enough of how the leveling is done behind the scenes, obviously. As a parent, that's not something, you guys don't call me and ask me who I want teachers to be. So what would it, what's the difference look like between having the sixth grade doing it versus having the whole middle school doing it? What does that look like for the students? And how much change would the students be expecting? Like, could the students see from no longer having leveling? Because like I said, I didn't know what leveling was growing up. So I don't know how aware middle schoolers today are of it.
So I'm actually, I'm going to punt this question over to Mr. Poska and Dr. Andre because I think we can all speculate how things are done in the middle school, but they know.
Can I just, may I just clarify? This would not make, this isn't asking for a phase-in or a grandfather approach. This is saying, sixth would not be leveled, seventh and eighth would be leveled. That's what my intent is.
Yes, and I understand. I think Ms. Darling's question is, what makes the difference between leveling and not leveling within the grades of the middle school instead of as a middle school as a whole? And I'm going to defer that. I'm sure you guys have.
So I'm going to put first, like again, the Middle School Steering Committee has done a lot of work on the research around leveling. A lot of, as Ms. Burns said, conversations around what are standards? And I think where the Middle School Steering Committee is coming from is that, in the DOJ, is that we don't have a solid tier-one curriculum. So when we start talking about we're still going to retain leveling, we're still talking about having classes that are not meeting grade level expectations. And so I'm concerned that we are changing a policy that's going to actually memorialize that we don't have high expectations for all kids. And that's what our levels are doing right now. So I'm concerned that we're going to say, in sixth grade, we have no levels, but in seventh and eighth grade, there's still levels. This policy is written saying we will honor high school level classes that are aligned to high school credits, which is the acceleration, which I think, Mr. Claffey, to your point, would say that would be a different level aligned to the high school. But all students would get grade level expectations. So I don't know if that's what you're trying to say around levels or honest class. But I think the Middle School Steering Committee did a lot of work, as Ms. Burns has said, as, you know, Ms. Raymond has articulated some of that research, on the benefits of making sure there's a guaranteed and viable curriculum. So leveling is, should be around what are the standards? And there is not clean curriculum to say what we're currently doing has three or four different curriculums that are aligned to grade level standards that all meet grade level standards along with their assessments. So our current system, I would say, when we're looking at foundations, extensions, honest classes are not equal. And they're not all aligned to grade level standards. So I would have concerns with that.
Can I, at what point do I get to defend my rationale for this? Well, I'd like to, but.
Well, I just need to call on you, is all. No, yeah. No, it's Mr. Claffey then Ms. Raymond.
Okay, thank you. Just so you know, I thought about including the words "with" student placement determined by the district, but I thought that would open another can of worms. Although, based on my experience with leveling at the high school, 32 years, I think a problem, the problem is that the schools don't always call the shots. And there are students who are self-placed. Sometimes too low, many times too high, but that, I left that out. I wanted people to know, I thought to be more members of the committee here. And I didn't know if you'd know this about me, but over 25 years ago, there was a small group of us. And we formed a school within a school that was based on heterogeneous grouping, based on a system created by Ted Sizer called the Coalition of Essential Schools. And a cornerstone of that reform movement was de-leveling. So you had about eight teachers that just felt really, like I'm sure the Steering Committee does, that there are some serious problems with the labels, the stigmatization. And we chose, this was voluntary, we chose to set up a program. It started with about 80 10th graders, they moved up to 11th. Not all chose to stay. But there were a couple of big differences between what we did and what this policy change would do. First and foremost, this was a voluntary program. This wasn't imposed on anybody. And that kind of relates to my concern that we don't have evidence that even a plurality of middle school teachers support this. We were also, no, we don't have a survey. We don't. We have a committee, you know, the committee is almost unanimously behind us. I haven't received many emails from teachers saying they support it. I've received a couple from people on the committee, but I haven't seen emails from teachers that say, I'm so excited to do this, this is wonderful. It's great for students, too. We, we were small. And the other thing that really helped us was, we received a guarantee their class size would be limited to 20 students. And finally, a big difference is that even though your students were mixed, they chose a level that they wished to be placed at, within one setting. The other experience I wanted to share that's had a pretty profound impact on my view, I've been shopping at middle schools for the past year. I was there today, in fact, it was wonderful. We didn't have power all day, which means the kids couldn't get to their Google Classroom plans. So it was like babysitting sixth graders playing, I'm hitting them. It was a wonderful day. But I've been doing this usually about two days a week. Couple of middle schools, they haven't had levels. I've spoken with a couple of teachers, a few teachers who have been there a while. The teachers are, these middle school teachers, this is a district that's much more diverse than ours and it's bigger than ours. They've been doing it for a long time. The teachers are dedicated, they're highly competent. But what I don't see, what I haven't seen, it's clear to me is, and this is really, this is the toughest vote that I've had on this board by far. I don't see rigor. I don't see individualized instruction. I definitely don't see differentiation. And there's nothing in this policy to guarantee that's going to happen here. You can say it's going to happen. You can say, well, as a great teacher, you're going to do it. But there's nothing in the policy that guarantees it. I'm just telling you what I see. That's not a criticism of these teachers because I wouldn't want to be in their shoes and feel their pain. We're 50 pairs short now, I don't, that's the latest number I saw. The one good thing I've seen in this district, sometimes there'll be three adults plus the teacher. There'll be a tutor, two paras, I was a para, I've been a para bunch. And I will say, as far as staffing and support goes, that's there. They have that. And I think part of the reason is, if you're a para sub, you get paid a lot more than a Nashua sub teacher. We just approved a new calculus, AP Physics course. It's based on calculus. I really fear that if we get rid of some kind of guaranteed accelerated program for seventh, eighth grade, one of the, you know, the best things that we can, that we, I think we like to brag about is how many AP scholars we have. And I worry that that pipeline is going to dry up if we don't ensure that middle school students who run a really, really accelerated pace are going to get that. So I'm going to wrap up. But I thought a lot about the first words in the policy. And the first words that I see are an emphasis on a student-centered program. And in my opinion, if this passes, you should delete those, we should delete those words. I think it's curriculum-centered, I think it's equity-centered, and those are noble goals. I think it's diversity-centered, opportunity-centered, those are noble goals, goals. But I just don't think students, individual student achievement will be paramount if we do this. And, you know, I think we can still raise the bar for all students. That doesn't mean every student, each student faces one common bar.
Raymond?
Thank you. I just, believe it or not, I agree with Mr. Claffey. And one of my biggest concerns about the way that we're doing things is the lack of academic rigor at the middle school level and how that is preparing or not preparing kids for high school. I was part of the Ed Council meeting in November, which you have representatives from each level of the school, they all of the schools. So there's a high school rep, a middle school and elementary school rep. And teachers provide feedback to the rep and then they provide the feedback to the superintendent and the board. And under high school, the, one of the biggest things that they were concerned about was whether or not students were coming from the middle school prepared for the rigor of honors and AP level classes. And, you know, the comments that were about leveling and placing students in classes, resilience, working when it's hard, motivation, and meeting standards. So kids are in honors, are getting placed in honors in high school because of their placement in honors in middle school, but they're not prepared for the honors level work because they're not getting that rigor in honors and middle school now. And I can see this as a parent of a 15-year-old and a 13-year-old who were both classified as honors, the amount of work that my 15-year-old has in his honors and AP classes in high school versus the classes he had in middle school, it just doesn't even compare. Like, he never had homework in middle school. He had no idea how to do all of that stuff that was suddenly expected to him, for him, day one of an honors level high school class. And I think that we have an obligation. And that's why, if you look at the policy, the number G there, where it says you have, we are going to codify taking the high school level classes, I insisted on that, I was kind of a pain in the butt about it because I think that we need to prepare those students. But when I look at the fact that the only students right now who are getting grade level instruction are honors students, it makes me angry. It makes me angry on behalf of my kid and all those other kids because honors, I always thought, was advanced. Like, if you're in honors in seventh grade, it's like seventh grade and a little bit more, right? That's not what our kids are getting. And I'm so scared that if we don't make a change, if we do what we did back in 2018 and we said, well, the honors kids need the extra, and we continue to not give the honors kid extra and not give the other 75% of our students the grade level standards, we're never going to get our test scores up and we're never going to prepare our kids. And when it comes to COVID, there's actually an article, I think it was in the Eagle Tribune yesterday, about the fact that test scores are down everywhere. But test scores are down pre-COVID. They dipped in COVID, now they're almost back to pre-COVID. But in 2018, 2019, across the state, they had already dropped from 2015 to 2018. Part of that is because we introduced a new standardized testing here in New Hampshire. And we still haven't changed our curriculum and our teaching standards to match the new state assessments. But we're not going to get better if we keep doing things the same. And I, I'm really hesitant to say, well, we're going to keep leveling in grade seven and eight, when it just means that we're going to keep teaching grade level at one for some students and not for the rest. Like, to me, we need to hold everyone to a standard of a rigor of grade level standard. And then if kids need extra help, we can give extra help. If you need extra challenges, give extra challenges. But I don't know, I can't sleep at night with the fact that our kids aren't getting what they need. Just, it's killing me.
I see you guys with your hands raised. I haven't said anything yet. Do you guys mind if I say something first?
Okay. So this leveling thing has, we've obviously been discussing this for a long time. I come from kind of where Mr. I come from kind of where Mr. Claffey is, where this is a really hard vote for me. Personally, leveling has been fantastic for me, it's kept my kids on track, I like leveling, it makes me feel good about myself. But professionally, I worked with the kids who were in the lower levels, and when a teacher told them, "I believe in you, and I think you can handle this," they grew so much more than the kids who were already in the honors classes. So where the kids that I know who are honors students kept going with the pace, the kids who were told, "You know what? I think you can handle this math, I think you can handle this English, I think you can handle this social studies assignment," they grew exponentially compared to the kids who were already labeled as honors students. And I think when we have the opportunity to create that kind of growth, you know, maintain the growth that's happening with the kids who find academics easy, and if we have the opportunity to create that amazing step up for kids who have been told for years that you're, you need to be taught at a slower level, because, I don't know, because English isn't your first language, because you have stress going on at home, because you're not sleeping at night, because you're not eating well. If you have a teacher who says to you, "I think you are capable," those kids, in my experience, have always risen to their expectations. And I, I think when we tell kids, as a school district and as a Board of Education, that we believe in your capacity and your capability, I think we're gonna see a whole mess of students doing a whole lot better, and not just keeping the cream of the crop, the cream of the crop. So that, that's what I wanna say, I will step. Oh, and I also wanna follow the research that says it's a good idea, and the middle school's teachers who say it's a good idea. So Ms. Johnson, then Ms. Brown.
I agree a lot with Mr. Claffey says. He's been a teacher, he's seen it in the classrooms, haven't been a teacher. But I guess my question is, pre-COVID, our scores were down. COVID, they went more, now we're back to pre-COVID. All over the state, we, most of the state, has not had levels, am I correct? Okay. So how are we comparing levels to non-levels with this? So if most of the state, this, their scores are down, we can blame the testing, we always have something to blame on, but I'm looking at this, I said, yes, we can have kids in the lower, in the foundations and extensions, they can excel. They can excel into honors, nothing can, we don't have to keep them back. We have to have consistency in the system, and we know that we haven't had that in a long time. I cannot, at this point in time, vote to take away the levels. I, I read all this, I've reviewed everything, I think it's just too much at this point in time with what's happening in the district, and I think that, you know, fifth grade goes into sixth, so you're kind of moving it along. And then, when you're in the middle school, and if you have leveling at the high school, wouldn't you wanna have these kids go into the AP classes that they're gonna be going into the high school? Are we taking anything away? I don't think so, at this point in time. I'm just not a hundred percent convinced that this is the right thing to do for our students. And I know that I'm gonna be in the minority here. There's, I can almost, I can almost count and say who's yes and who's no around this horseshoe. So, thank you.
Dr. Sarfati had her hand up. Do you mind if, if she steps in front of you? I'm, I'm gonna guess she has some academic information to share.
Hi, friends. I did wanna just jump on, I did wanna just jump on what Ms. Bishop said. So before I do, I'd just like to bring us back to the settlement really quickly, and I wanna remind the board that five times within that settlement, the DOJ mentions the Equal Opportunities Act of nineteen seventy-four. And the Equal Opportunities Acts, the Equal Opportunities Act of nineteen seventy-four prohibits us from discriminating against students based on their gender, all, all of the protected classes, their, their language acquisition status, whether or not they have IEPs. And I will tell you with regard to that report, the leveled learner outcomes, I worked with Jonathan Foster a couple of years ago, I think everybody has seen that. And what we found, when we pulled that report and put it together, is that we have consistently, for many, many years, underserved all of those protected class students, or the students who fall into the protected class. So again, five times that act is, is mentioned in the settlement, but also twenty-five times the Department of Justice mentions access to core content and core curriculum. I do believe that, you know, this is a civil rights issue, I, I, as somebody who comes from Massachusetts, who's been through a DOJ settlement before, I, I, I can definitely see this being another OCR complaint. But with regard to the research, to jump on what you said, Ms. Bishop. So everybody knows about how John Hattie, you know, Visible Learning, has synthesized meta-analyses, and, and we talk about research, Ms. Johnson, there is no research to support whole language, there never was. There never was. There's research, and then there's actual research. When we're looking for evidence-based practices and evidence-based approaches, again, we're looking for consistent outcomes that we can see that are replicated whether we're in Nashua or we're in Austria. It doesn't matter where we are, the outcome should be the same and they should be consistent. That didn't exist with whole language. One thing about, about effect size with regard to John Hattie's research is that what they've, it's not just John Hattie's research, he just synthesized the meta-analyses. So the hinge point, when we know that students are going to make a year's worth of growth, that hinge growth, that hinge point is point four oh. I just wanna go back to a couple of misconceptions. When it comes to grouping for gifted students and putting gifted, gifted students in a higher or the highest ability groups, that, the, the effect size is point three. So I just wanna, just, point four is a year's worth of growth, growth. Point three is less than a year's worth of growth. So I just wanna highlight that. Also, I wanna caution the board and caution my colleagues about leveling or differentiating within the classroom. We know that when it comes to specific middle school grouping within our classroom, the effect size is point one eight. So essentially, what that tells me is, if we arbitrarily or, or subjectively determine which students are going to get access to, you know, which pieces of our, our curriculum, when it comes to our expectations for them, if it is less, we're gonna, we are setting our kids up to have an opportunity gap that we provide. Not an achievement gap, not an instruction gap, it's an opportunity gap. And then the last thing I just wanna say, back to what you said, Ms. Bishop, which is really, really profound. We know that when it comes to a teacher's belief in a student, a teacher's belief that every single child can achieve at a high level, the effect size is one point two nine. And certainly, I mean, that the, the correlation between what a teacher believes a child can do, and then the level of rigor that that teacher then exposes the child to, we're talking the potential of almost three years of growth in one year. I just, so, we're gonna talk about the research, it's really profound, and it's very well documented.
All just colloquial, sitting in, in classrooms with, with kids who didn't feel like they were gonna mount to much. Ms. Brown, and then Ms. Lamphier.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Sarfati. And I am actually just gonna bring us back to the amendment that's on the floor. I wanna.
Can I call it?
No, well, I wanted to say something, and then, sure, I'll call the question. I do wanna say that if we're talking about our standards of rigor, that's a different conversation than what's going on in this policy. That's a conversation that should be happening through curriculum, and we forget that the other word in there is evaluation, it's not just a curriculum committee. So that, we should have high expectations, and whether a child's in whatever class level they're in, I think I have faith in our teachers, that the teachers are showing them that they have their support. I don't think it's only the honors kids that are getting the teachers that, that support their academic careers. That said, in regards to Mr. Claffey's amendment, I think the area where this could particularly be helpful would be math. I think hopefully everyone's coming in from their fifth-grade experience at the same level, at the sixth grade, at the sixth grade level, you know, throughout the city. I know we still have some, we struggle with that a little bit through the different elementary schools, but it has been a goal of ours to make sure that we have consistent curriculum and teaching throughout the district. When they get into sixth grade, that is a good place where they're learning, you know, there's a lot of things going on for middle schoolers in general, in puberty and all that kind of stuff. I get concerned that we are going to offer algebra classes as an eighth grader, but if everyone is taking the same level class, will there actually be anyone who has enough of a foundation to take the, the algebra, take Algebra I for high school credit? Will you still have the eight, will you only have sixth grade or seventh grade math, the regular typical classroom learning? So I do think that there should, needs to be acceleration at the very least in math, to make sure that we have access to that. So with that, I would like to call the question.
Okay. Hold the question, sorry. We're only voting on the amendment, though? So when we get done voting on the amendment, are you speaking in regards to the whole policy?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll, we'll, we'll be able to come back after. I'm just waiting for Ms. Lamphier.
I could, if, 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 if people, I will remove my motion, if, which wasn't seconded, by the way. So I will remove my call the question if you wanna take the vote.
Okay. Well, never, then I'll let Ms. Lamphier speak on the amendment, and then we'll go, we'll, we'll vote on the amendment.
So I ran for the Board of Education because I wanted to represent the interests of all the children in the school. And so I have a personal story about leveling, it, it affected my life greatly. I was in the honors-level classes, and I did well, went to college and everything. But my sisters, who were leveled starting in the seventh grade, because we all went to junior high and not a middle school, they felt that the schools didn't care about them, they felt that they were, didn't belong there, they felt they weren't learning anything, and both of them dropped out of high school. And where were three girls from the same family? If that's the difference in the way that our high school careers went within one family, I can only imagine what the difference is, or actually, I know from the data, the differences between, you know, minority and, and minority kids, and how differently they're treated. So I just think that it's really important that we get rid of this policy. It's, it's outdated, and it's, the data shows that it's not effective, and it actually hurts a lot of kids. Thank you.
Okay, so on the amendment to only level seventh and eighth and not sixth grade, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
That was Mr. Claffey, Ms. Brown, Ms. Johnson. Did it, I'm, did anyone else say yes? No, okay, so the amon, the amendment, the amendment doesn't pass, so we go back to... Oh, yeah, sorry. Because people may be abstaining. All those i-
Roll call.
All those against, say yes, say nay.
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 So none, two, three. So the nays, the nays have it. Let's just go back to the original policy, which is IMBD, so-
I'll call the question on the policy.
I think, yeah, I think I was just gonna head over there, anyway. Discussion over, is that okay? Okay. Okay, so no more discussion on IMBD, I don't think there's anything more that we have to add. So all those in favor of, of policy IMBD as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
No.
Note, the student members cast their symbolic votes.
Okay.
Can we, can we do a, can we do a roll call vote?
Yeah, can we do, just because I, I didn't hear everybody. Can you do a roll call, Ms. Lamphier, sorry?
Oh, sure. Okay, so-
And include the students, because they-
Yes. So Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
No.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
I am a yes. Ms. Johnson?
No.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
And, let's see, Dante, Mr. Castellano?
No.
And Mr. Farley?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for being a part of that, but the motion passes.
So just to finish up policy, we also have our first reading tonight of EBCB, which is fire safety, and a first reading of IJ, which is instructional materials. So if people have comments, we are now open for public comments for those things, and if the board feels like the policy committee needs to do more work before it comes back for a second reading, now would be the time to let us know that, so that we can do that.
Ms. Odin, Ms. Johnson?
Seeing we having two readings, readings, the new members don't take their seats until January, so why don't you wait until January, so they can be part of the two readings?
Well, I think they can review it, just like the regular public would. I, I did think about this before it went on the agenda. I think the, the new members should be paying attention to what's going on in meetings right now. I'm sad that they're not here to just kind of meet everybody, but I think, I think I would like to let them know that there is homework to be done before you come into a meeting. So I'd like these on the agenda for now, so that when they come in, they're already kind of in the groove of like, looking at meeting minutes, reading agendas, getting up to date. So that's why I was in agreement with these being on the agenda, but I know it seems mean, but-
But if they had questions?
They can come to policy, or at the next meeting, they can ask questions.
In January? But that's when-
Because we still have to establish, we still have to establish all of the committees, they may, this may even pique their interest in wanting to be on policy. I think there's a lot of work that's gonna be done, like, the first week, anyway, depending on who's in what. But I think everybody just needs to know that we need to be coming to the table with an understanding of what happened at the last meeting, and that just needs to be part of common practice.
Are they already receiving the packets?
No, they haven't been sworn in yet, but it's all online.
Thank you.
Ms. Raymond?
I just wanna mention as well that we discussed this at length at Policy Committee, about whether or not we should bring forward for a first reading a couple of policies. At the end of the day, we decided to go ahead and do it for, for two reasons, and one was that these are both policies that we have been requested to update. So the Fire Marshal asked that we update EBCB about fire safety, which I don't believe will require any classroom changes. I don't think any of our teachers have flammable curtains in their classrooms, but in case they do, the Fire Marshal has asked us to get this policy updated. And then IJ was updated in accordance with requests from the Department of Justice. So given our recent meeting with the Department of Justice, we felt like it was important to get a move on, on that, especially if timing-wise, we don't end up having time for a policy committee meeting in January. The swearing-in isn't until, because of the calendar, swearing-in isn't until the seventh, our first meeting is the ninth, and people have time to pick their committees, getting a policy committee meeting in, it just, it felt, it felt like an unnecessary delay after the DOJ specifically asked us to work on stuff.
Johnson?
Thank you. If you're doing, I believe this should be under new business for policy, it should be on the end of the agenda. But when you're talking about first reading, whatever you put it, you should be announcing the date here in the meeting, so people who are watching knows the exact date that the policy committee's gonna be meeting, because we never talk about the dates that our meetings, our committee meetings are happening.
Yeah.
So that always should be, because that's transparency and that's under the right to know when the meetings are gonna be held.
Thank you.
We used to do that, we used to finish, like, we'd say, you know, and, and that concludes policy, our next meeting is on such and such a date. I don't actually know- I don't actually know when it is in January. I don't have the calendar yet.
We don't have anything set up yet. So this is, this is the weird part of the year anyway where. Yes, we did.
A good idea. We should do it again.
Okay. So we have definitely some wrinkles to iron out in this first and second reading stuff. And however the cookies crumble at the beginning of January, we'll deal with it. Okay. Back to the agenda. Sorry, I was waiting for somebody else to queue in. No, that, we won't know till the ninth. Okay. So Committee on Human Resources, I will hand the floor over to Ms. Chilio.
Hi. I'd look, looking for a recommendation to suspend the rules to consider items from the HR meeting held earlier this evening.
Second. You, all those in favor of suspending the rules to consider items on the HR meeting held earlier this evening, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
During the, the meeting earlier, we, we approved the rec, we rec, approved the recommended personnel recommendations of December 18th, 2023. So I think we need to, we recommend that they be approved.
I'll second that.
Okay. So on the motion to approve the personnel recommendations of December 18th, 2023, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Finally, we did make a recommendation to, while making a recommendation to approve the revised job description of Elementary Special Education Coordinator, which we, we did make one small change to it, which had to do more with where the comma goes and where the or goes versus anything that had to do with the intention of it. And so we recommended that that be approved tonight by the full board.
Do you have a second for that? Thank you, Ms. Odin. So on the motion to approve the revised job description, Elementary School Education Coordinator as amended in HR Committee tonight, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Liaison reports, we didn't have, we haven't had JSSBC since the last meeting, right? It's Thursday. No Ed Council, no, no other liaison reports, right? I'm not missing anything? Okay. Unfinished business, new business. So I will hand the floor over to Dr. Andre.
So the first item in new business is a recommendation to approve the Nashua Ed Foundation Fall 2023 Grants. Just for the public's information, the Nashua, Nashua Ed Foundation seeks the Board of Education approval for seven grants totaling fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars to Nashua teachers for the following classroom projects. The first one is a pride grant run by Judy Loftus at Nashua South. The second one is a geometry table run by a math teacher at Nashua North. A Gizmo pilot, which is actually a program, it's not just Gizmos, from another science teacher at Nashua North. Circle the Waggons is a world language program by some South teachers. Successful middle, successful middle school research is looking for district wide, again, on our conversation that we just had, a grant to support further research. And that's run by an ELA middle school teacher. Exploration, that's by a grade five teacher at Lit Street and a sensory grant at New Sterling Elementary School. So that totals to, again, fourteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then just again, more information, since 2011, the Nashua Ed Foundation has contributed more than $250,000 in grants to Nashua school teachers for classroom projects. The mission of the foundation is to enhance the educational opportunities for Nashua public school students. So thank you for your consideration. I'm looking for a motion to approve these grants.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Raymond. Okay, so although, sorry, on the motion to approve the new, the Nashua Education Foundation Fall 2023 Grants, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to all of those teachers who put in probably a lot of work requesting those grants. That is not, not an easy job, a lot of work, a lot of work.
And so the second recommendation is to approve FY24 non-affiliated raises. You've received those, that information in your packets over the weekend. So if there's any questions on that, I'm looking for a recommendation.
Can we get a motion on the table and then you guys can ask your questions?
Well, I'm wondering if my question has to be in public or non-public.
Let's just go into non-public, just in case.
Okay. I move that we go into non-public under the negotiations one, which I think is E.
I bet Ms. Lamphier has the whole list in front of her.
Um, yeah. So. I might have it in front of me. Okay, so it would be under RSA 91A32?
E, A32E. They're all RSA 91A32. Ms. Lamphier, I just have to tell you that it's literally sitting right here in front of me. I just chose not to look at it. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I just, I, I thought it was A because it says compensation, the discussion, compensation of any public employee, but if it's.
Sure, it can be A.
Okay, so under RSA 91A32A.
Can we do a roll call vote? Wait, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
And Ms. Chilio?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are now in non-public. At 7:39. Yep, please shut that off. Sorry, guys. We'll be quick.
Motion to seal the minutes under RSA 91A332, render proposed action ineffective. The motion was made by Ms. Bishop. It was seconded by Ms. Johnson at 7:55. And the roll call, Ms. Darling?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond? Mr. Claffey?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bishop?
Yes.
And Ms. Chilio? Okay. The motion passes.
Okay. So we are back on, we need a motion to approve the fiscal year 24 non-affiliated raises.
So moved. Wait, what's Jimmy saying?
I don't think, he's not motioning anything. So Ms. Raymond made the vote, made the motion. Do I, I need a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All those in favor of approving FY24 non-affiliated raises, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us up to our second public comment. You'll have to sit next to Ms. Darling again, but Beth Scare. Remember, three minutes, we have 15 minutes to start with. If we need more, I'll be looking for a motion for that.
Okay, Beth Scare, 111 East Hobart Street. I'm here to speak to the parents of Nashville public schools, public school students. If you're happy with the education you're receiving at Nashville schools, I'm not talking to you, but if your kids are struggling, then please listen. Are your kids victims of bullying, threats of violence, or actual violence? Are your kids bored? Bored in class or struggling to catch up? Are any of your kids' teachers neglecting your kids, disrespecting them, or outright bullying them? Are your kids exposed to inappropriate topics at school such as critical race theory or gender identity? Are your kids' child's special needs being ignored? Are school administrators blowing off your pleas for help? I feel your pain. I have lived it. There is help for you. Education Freedom Accounts offer your kids a way out. EFAs offer up to 4,600 per eligible child to families earning up to 350% of the poverty line to be used for tuition at the school of your choice, tutoring, online learning programs, special education services, educational supplies, and other educational expenses. EFAs allow funds to follow the child to whichever education pathway is best for their unique needs and talents, giving every child the opportunity to succeed. All kids should have access to a quality education regardless of their income or zip code. Kids from impoverished families in the inner city deserve the same chance at a good education as kids from wealthier Nashville families. Visit NHEFA.com to learn if your family's eligible and to apply for Education Freedom Accounts for your kids. They only get one chance at an education. Thanks.
Thank you. Sue Newman?
Hi, Sue Newman, 25 Charlotte Avenue. I am here with a not, it's a serious, but I hope lighthearted and well-intentioned commentary. I'll be brief. Congratulations sincerely to all returning board members who ran and won their seats. Huge congratulations and thank yous to all of you around the table. That's you all too, who continue to serve Nashua and all our students. Last time I came and spoke what I think is something like this was when Mrs. Zim was leaving. And I can remember, I thanked her for her service and all the years of dedicated dedication that she had given to the Nashua School District. So tonight, I'm personally going to comment on Mrs. Odin. I feel she, I'm a friend of hers, but I do put her in a class by herself without me. She has volunteered and with your support, she came back and served an additional two years on the board. That makes a total of 14 years. I was looking at this young man in the audience. I don't know that he's much older than 14 and I'm thinking, okay, 14, that's a long time. She served in various leadership capacities on the board, not the least of which was board president. And again, it's 14 years. Mrs. Odin has been a reliable, capable, dedicated member of the Board of Ed, and I've appreciated her philosophy, vote your conscience. I just want to comment that when I first met Mrs. Odin many years ago, I knew she was from Maine and I knew her, that her name was Dottie. That's all I knew about her. It was quite a while later when I realized, someone told me, maybe she did, that her official name is really Dorothy. I didn't know anybody named Dorothy. The Wizard of Oz and Dorothy from Kansas was my only frame of reference. But be that as it may, she's Dottie. But with that information that she was Dottie, I started doing some research. It was fairly recently, but I did a lot of research about Dottie. I've discovered that she, Mrs. Odin, is actually one of the most highly regarded members of a very distinctive, esteemed, selective group of people. The delegation of terrifically talented Yankees, acronym Dottie. So thank you. Thank you for your service. I'm glad I've embarrassed you. I wish you all the best holiday season ever. Thank you again for all of the service that you've provided. Thank you.
You, Ms. Newman. And we all agree with you. Sue Judasey? Did I say it right that time? No? Yes? Yeah, I can learn new things. I have no plans of getting any better than I am now.
Good evening. Sue Judasey, Mahogany Drive. I was comfortable. I was in my pajamas. I was watching TV. I was getting ready for the Phillies game. And I had obviously a Board of Ed meeting on and then I took the vote on the leveling question and upstairs, changed my clothes, jumped into the car. I'm lucky I didn't get speeding ticket on my way here. But I, I just have a couple of comments. First of all, Sue reminded me, and I have it in my notes. I want to thank Dottie and Jessica and Ann Paula. You've all done a remarkable job. And what I like about the three of you, probably the best, not one of you the best, what I like best about you guys is you ask questions. You don't just kind of rubber stamp anything that Central Office wants. And I really, really appreciate that. It's important. And you have to do your homework and you have to ask the questions. And I think you were the three of the best at doing it. So thank you very, very much. Next, I want to thank Neil and Jessica and Paula for voting against leveling change. And I guess it's just a couple of things I just have to say. I think misconceptions that have come out. One of the biggest misconceptions and the one that hurts my feelings the most as a 35-year teacher at the middle school was that it seemed to be implied that high expectations are not set for the foundation level. And maybe some of you think for the middle level as well. That couldn't be any more untrue. I want you to come on Friday nights to Fairgrounds Middle School. Every Friday night, I was there until at least eight o'clock in the evening. And my main task was sitting down, planning on a Friday night. Because how can I plan a month ahead when I haven't even got through the week? And I was specifically, if we're talking about photosynthesis, I taught photosynthesis to the foundations, but at a level that they understood it. And same thing for the extension level, same thing for the honors level. So to imply that you don't get a good education at those other levels other than honors is a huge misconception. And you need to do your job and find out exactly what teachers are doing and how they are approaching that. I really mean it. That made me angry. But you have more problems than just leveling in the middle school. The big problem that you are gonna have to tackle, and I think you've been afraid to tackle it, is do you understand, board members, that you can go in sixth grade and fail every subject in sixth grade and you will be moved on to seventh? Seventh, fail, move to eighth. Eighth, fail, now you're in high school. And I am not kidding. I know, I know. I'm not kidding about that. You need to talk about rigor. You need to have some rigor in these, in these schools. I don't care whether it's extension level or foundation level or honors level. There is rigor in some classes, but boy, you can just move right on. And also consider the makeup of the middle school committee. More than 50% of the people on the middle school committee were either curriculum coaches, administration, or they were like, it's the special ed team that only have three, four, five kids in their class. Not the 25 that a lot of the core teachers have. Thank you very much. Have a great holiday.
Thank you. Steven Scare?
Good evening again. I just want to take an opportunity to follow up on what I heard here. When I was little, it was a different age then, my dad taught me to swim by throwing me in the lake repeatedly. Didn't work. I'd wake up, I mean, I'd get pulled out and he'd finally fish me out when I was coughing and hacking. Then he'd throw me in again. Education remediation is really, really tough, which is why people spend so much time in, in IEP meetings. And they come up with a bunch of goals that are a wish list, essentially saying, well, let's, let's get. let's get Jill on on grade level with all these things. And they put it in an IEP, and then magically you hope it's going to happen. What it takes, and if you probably have special ed students in your life, is a lot of patience, a lot of guided practice. If something's tough for us, we need more practice than the other students. And we need to find out most of all, and this is a big failing of public schools, what level is the student does. I don't care if someone's in seventh grade and they don't have third grade skills. We shouldn't be giving them seventh grade work. That's just a miserable thing to do. But what I heard this evening, if I heard right, is we don't have to go through all that work. All I have to do is take kids with academic challenges, and I can put them in with kids that have really high achievement scores in the same class. And miraculously, through that, just by raising the standards really high, they're going to learn, their scores are going to go up instead of getting them at the levels that they need to. I'm sure my dad had high levels of high standards for me even swimming, and he kept throwing me in the water. And that's what I see having here. Going forward, something I'd like you to look at, first of all, I'd like to I'd like to see the research that shows that this works. Secondly, I'd like to know how you're going to track this to make sure that students are doing better this way. We're not doing something that's, because what we're doing is giving the appearance of equity and social justice, but we might just be masking the problem. And we all care about these kids, we all want to march with Martin Luther King. This seems like a really quick and easy and magical solution. So, thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to the end of public comments. It is now time for board member comments. Maybe in a couple of weeks, you guys will have different seats and it won't be Sharon or Christina, because right now it's Christina.
Just so you know, for next month, my kid is already really excitedly planning for me to get number one again. I'm really hoping that he's wrong. We'll see.
It's only good for a Yankee swap.
It's great for a Yankee swap. You know, I just, I want to say goodbye to the wonderful friends that I've made. I honestly don't know how I would have gotten through the last two years without all three of you on one occasion or another. Dottie is probably the only reason I survived parent negotiations with my hair intact. Paula is the person I go to about everything financial. She understands numbers better than... Please feel free to look at my personal finances, anytime. And Jess, the friendship I have with you is amazing. It's better than I have with almost anyone else. You're right up there as a best friend. And you've helped me learn a lot about what it means to be on the board. Whether that means smiling when you don't necessarily want to or speaking up when you really, really, really don't want to. And I appreciate everything I've learned from you guys. So, thank you, and I'm going to miss you all.
Raymond?
Feel free to go for number two.
Mr. Claffey?
Enjoy your freedom. And thank you for putting up with me.
Thank you. Ms. Lambier?
I just have so much respect for everyone on this board. And you guys all brought something good and took your, sacrificed a lot to be here. And I'm going to miss all three of you. I miss your voices, I'll miss your presence. And, but like Neil said, I hope you enjoy your freedom.
These guys have requested to go last, so I'll skip over to Ms. Gilio.
I wish the three board members and our departing student all the best. And I've had some amazing times with all of you in this room. Thank you.
Yes, and I'm going to go before you guys. I also want to say thank you for the time that you have spent on this board. Ms. Oden, thank you for joining us again and filling in a role that was necessary and needed. And you brought a level of accomplishment and insight to our board meetings that is invaluable. Ms. Johnson, your attention to detail is not something I want, ever. I appreciate that you have it, and I've enjoyed getting to know you. And I think we've experienced a lot in the last four years outside of this board and just kind of living and growing and being humans. And I appreciate the time that you've spent. And Ms. Brown, same thing. I think it's been a very interesting four years. I think it's been interesting to see like, kind of us grow on the board. And also, I know all of our kids are in the same classes and watching our kids grow. And just, I really admire the momming that you've been doing. And I know back in the teacher negotiations, even though we didn't agree, I, in that meeting, had commended you for standing up and, you know, voting for what you believed in and holding your ground. And even though I didn't, I didn't agree with you, I just want to say it again. Your kids are very lucky to be growing up with such a strong and amazing lady. So, congratulations, and we'll miss you guys. So, that's all I have to say. Now it's off to you guys.
Well, thank you, everybody, for saying so many nice things about us. I have to start by saying how grateful I am for the opportunity to represent Nashua and the community the last four years. There's certainly been some tumultuous and trying times, but there've also been some real victories for the district too. I have to thank all the teachers, students, parents and taxpayers who have emailed and called and come to speak and advocate before this board on issues that were driven by passion and hope. I value the courage that it takes to stand up for what you believe in. My goal throughout my term has been to take a student-centered approach to my votes, which is interesting that that came up this evening, because I did write this earlier. And so, as I step away from this horseshoe, there's a few matters that I would still like to draw attention to, because, you know, I have to. Because I think they're going to come to affect the district students pretty soon and the families for years to come. So, first, I want to target the issue of transparency from this Board of Education, the Nashville Board of Aldermen and the mayor, because they hold our purse strings, and the Joint Special Building Committee, which is comprised of both board members and aldermen. Moving forward, even as a seated member on this board, I've been frustrated over and over again by kind of secrecy and misdirection from the district and the city. And I have access to a lot of the internal emails and closed-door meetings. However, I've frequently struggled with the flow of information. And there seems to be kind of a need-to-know policy for what the public needs to know through the city. Not even so much through this board, but I think that's citywide. I don't know if it's because the politicians who have been in power for the past few decades have gotten overly comfortable by deciding what the taxpayers should know and what they need to have access to for decision-making, or if there's maybe a question whether the public would be confused if they have, if the story doesn't get spun right. But I do know that the public should have open access to all the information for their meetings that affect their taxes and their education system here in their future Nashua. Which, that is one of the reasons that each week I vote, have voted against the consent agenda. Because we made a decision partway through my term here as board to get rid of, for beta minutes. And I think that it is a disservice to the community. The only way you can really sit, you either have to sit through the entire meeting or you have to stop and pause YouTube, and that's excruciating. No one wants to sit through a three-hour board meeting to find out what our decision on a hot-button issue was when all you see is the final vote. I think it actually, the vote dally, it actually devalues any discussion that led up to that vote and any reason for dissenting opinions or for a reason that maybe somebody might have changed their opinion along the way. And I think that the lack of transparency leads to division on the board and also the community at large. Next, there's two other major upcoming decisions that will affect this board in relatively short order. First, I want to address the next round of teacher negotiations that I won't be involved in. But I was in that committee, and everyone in this room, everyone in the community, and wants to make sure that our teachers are fairly compensated, passionate about it. They want to make them feel valued and respected, not just financially, but supported. Senior teachers in Nashua, after the last round of contracts, what are some of the top, the highest-paid teachers in the state? And they need to be because of our proximity to Massachusetts. We need to keep our pay competitive. But the problem is that it takes 15 to 20 years to get to the top of that pay scale. And then we continue to keep adding steps and steps and steps. And then, we also offer higher percentage raises to the people that are already receiving step-based pay raises and also another bump on top of that. Unfortunately, some are on the opposite of that side of that. Our entry-level teachers are at the bottom of the pay scale, which is not competitive to anywhere in the area. So, a lot of times, people come here to Nashua and they maybe get their feet wet a little bit, and they go to the surrounding areas where you can get to the top, middle, higher, the top and across the border in Massachusetts in 15, in 12 to 15 years rather than 15 to 18 to 20 years. We are, every week we hear about in public comment that we're in the middle of a Nashville teacher, a national teacher shortage. Universities cannot train teachers fast enough. We need to be able to compete to get young teachers in here because veteran teachers are becoming a retirement age. So, during the next round of teacher negotiations, I would encourage anyone on the committee, and I hope that this will be a priority of the district administration, to raise entry-level teacher pay and mid-level teacher pay, limit the number of steps it takes to get to the top of the pay scale, and give equal raises to all the teachers at all experience levels. Finally, it's the issue of redistricting and restructuring the capital improvement plans to our buildings and addressing both building costs and class sizes. This issue is heavy, it's multifaceted, it's been going on for years, and it will continue to go on for several more years. This needs to be a serious discussion, but we need to listen to experts on efficiency and school improvement. And this board needs to move away, from, I'm looking at all of you now in the eyes, from the old ways of waiting until issues are urgent to engage in the conversation. We need to make decisions that are still, while we still actually have options, and before the urgency forces your hand to go one direction or the other. We need to stop being overrun by populist movements or special interests or squeaky wheels, because we're always going to hear from them, and trust our instincts. Everyone here was elected to make decisions, and it's enormous responsibility. Even our student board members, it... To dodge votes because they're not going to be immediately popular or because they're going to impact our political future, it does a disservice to every person that voted for you and every person that voted against you. You're here as representatives, not figureheads. We need to be bold, make hard choices, and don't be afraid to stand alone. I have learned so much on this, from this experience. And I just want to wish all the best to my fellow board members, students, the administration, who I truly have enjoyed working with, every single one of you. And I also want to wish luck to the new members, because it's a steep learning curve in January. I want to thank the entire community and the teachers for allowing me to serve on this board. And I hope to see the Nashua School District moving forward. I know it will.
Johnson?
Guess I'm a, that's a hard act of following. Usually, I'm pretty good about this. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody on this board. I'd like to thank Mr. Claffey, because it's been a pleasure working with you. Because whenever I make a comment, you, that little smile on your face. And I know that we were semi-agreeing here. Ms. Darling, thank you for those kind words. I appreciate it. I'm not, yeah, I'm not the greatest organized person out there at times, you know. I, you know, detailed-oriented. I have to say, I have to thank Fred Teboom for teaching me back when, when I got on the Board of Ed and then on the Board of Aldermen. He taught me a lot. Whether people liked him or not, he taught me the details on how to find and how to do budgets. And I think a lot of that had to do with when my husband and I were self-employed. All of a sudden, I got thrown into being a businesswoman, which I never knew to do before. I want to kind of build a little bit on what you're saying here, because we talked about this in the last Finance and Operations Committee. And I talked about the Mount Pleasant Street School. I think that that's a school building that needs so much work in it that I don't know where you begin. And what we were looking at from 2017, those numbers are going to be totally different on that building. Nobody wants to talk about Mr. Preston's report that talks about how many schools we can close. I wouldn't suggest closing six schools. But nobody took a look at the population of where we've been from 10 years down to where we are. I truly believe we built a middle school that probably didn't need to be built. I feel bad for the neighbors around there. They promised that you'd never be able to see the building, and you can see it whether you want to or not. I feel that we, as government, we don't do what we promised to do. And we have to remember that we work for we, the people. We get elected by the people to represent the people, and we don't always do this. I don't have any special interests. Nobody ever gave me the money. And I don't want the money, because when I, every vote I took here was my conscience on how I felt. So, I just want to read a little statement into the record tonight as my farewell statement here. I want to thank everybody for this wonderful plaque. I have one of these already. I also have a brick when we built Stello Stadium, and I was one of the neighbors that was against it. But I still got the brick, and my name is on the plaque there because of the noise level over there, my neighbors and I. My name is on Holman Stadium, Conway Ice. I mean, I guess I'm an important person in the city. I don't feel that I'm that big of a person or that important. Although I can't walk out of Market Basket in 10 minutes, it could take me two hours later. My husband, I say, who would think? And my husband would say, who would think that you met somebody? But it just goes with the territory, because I try to reach out to everybody I can. I try to put things aside in the past. It doesn't work all the time. Do I hold grudges? Yes, I do. But I'm just going to read this kind of as my final statement. And it's going to tell you how I feel about what happened in the election. As a dedicated member and an advocate for the Nashua School District, I am taking a stand to protect the integrity of electoral process. The recent recount of the Nashville Board of Education election raised concerns about compliance with the state election laws. This lawsuit, which I'm sure everybody knows about by now, is about ensuring fairness, transparency and legal adherence to our elections. I won a seat on the board by a narrow margin. But an unlawful recount overseen by the Nashville Board of Aldermen resulted in my loss. The recount deviated from the state law requirements, particularly RSA 671:32, which mandate the recount should be conducted by the Nashua School District. I am seeking judicial intervention to reinstate the original election results, if I get them, I have to give back my plaque, but, results and prevent future disparities. Our democracy relies on trust and in fair and lawful elections. When that trust is compromised, it affects our community's governance. This legal action is a step towards protecting our democratic process that we always talk about, our democratic process and principles, maintaining trust in Nashua's electoral system. And I want to thank you all for your support as we navigate through this crucial process. It's a sad thing that this had to happen, but we will decide on Thursday. Right now, the time is set for 1:30 to 2:30 Nashua Superior Court. And if need be, we'll have a judge make a decision at this point in time and see if what's going to happen. But with that said, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a healthy and happy holiday, Happy New Year's. Hanukkah was great this year. All my stuff was packed in storage. I couldn't get to the menorahs to show my grandkids. But you know what? I'm sure we're going to have a happy and healthy New Year. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Ms. Oden?
I guess I'm going to go more toward a regular meeting. Any, is there any progress on getting an after-school bus for the music program at Amherst Street?
Not since our last discussion. I'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay. I did go to the program. Having taught there, I know a lot of people, and they told me there was a music program. So, I went and I, I was amazed when I taught... When I taught there, there were probably 400 students in the school. And I was talking to Kristin, the music director at the high school. She was the music teacher then. We probably had 12 to 15 kids in the band. There are now close to 300, 100 fewer, and there were probably 35 or 40 kids in the band. Katie Blue has just grown that program tremendously. But the sad part was, she said, yeah, I have one chorus, but they meet four different times. They're four different groups. They never get to meet as a chorus. So, I'm hoping we, the district can do something to improve that. She's worked real hard, and I think they're probably the only school in the district that meet like that, that don't have it. And I think they're entitled to more effort to get the program in better shape. I did go to the high school. Elf, the musical, the kids performed. Absolutely outstanding. It was, the scenery was just so professionally done, the acting, and nobody, it was a two-hour show. Nobody forgot a line. It was just amazing. I went to the concert the next night. I think it was the next, what are you laughing at? Oh, no. The music program, Kristin Olson is there. My gosh, she had four different concert groups, and then she had the final group. It was just an outstanding program. Kids did a great job. There's so much here in Nashua that we offer our kids, and we're very fortunate. Congratulations to San Diego Somar Resto Row. I don't, well, the All-American soccer player from Nashua South, congratulations. That was quite an honor. I want to thank Dr. Andre for his exceptional leadership, and I want to wish the new board members the best of luck. This job isn't quite as easy as it looks, but just vote your conscience, and you'll be able to put your head down on the pillow and sleep at night. And congratulations to our two students. Dante, I hope I see you some more down to Mines Falls running as I walk very slowly. And Warren, congratulations. I'm glad you're back here again. I think this might be the second time we had one person serve, I think. Who was it?
I believe it was Alex Norris.
Yes, yes, it was. So, thank you so much. And to all of you, good luck, and to all our administrators, and thank you all for sitting there. And Mrs. Newman, you didn't tell them that you served eight years on the board. Yeah, you taught me everything I know. Thank you so much.
For the last time.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned. It is 8:32 PM.